Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the West Fargo City Commission meeting of January 16th. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next is the order of the agenda. I know that I see some people are here to listen in about the Nitschke addition, so I'm going to move that up to number one. And item number five, the tax abatement for Lake Crest Partners, that has been settled, and so that is being pulled off the agenda. Those are all the changes I have.
Motion.
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next, approve the minutes of the January 4th meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have the building permits. Very short list this time around, beginning of the new year.
I just either...
Oh, is that right?
An exuberance. I mean, isn't that the...
Oh, no.
The county? I think it...
Any questions on the building permits? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. On to the regular agenda. As I said, we moved item six up to number one, which is more background and discussion points of the proposed Nitschke addition. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we stated at the last meeting, I think there were some questions as to what the process was that was happening here with Nitschke addition, because there were three applications. So I wanted to make sure that we left a placeholder here to provide all the detailed information that we've received to date, along with all the opposition emails, letters that we've received, and a tree assessment that was done on the property as well. So I have a presentation prepared. However, there's a public hearing scheduled for February 6th, and I don't want to belabor it or go over it double, so I just would offer to you as a board that if you want me to go through that presentation, I sure can. Otherwise, I'd like to maybe make this available for any points that commissioners might want us to deal with or address over the next couple of weeks.
Any questions from the... Again, the public hearing is next February 6th, right?
Yeah, at 5:30.
We want Tim to go through.
I don't know, Mayor, that we have to go through again tonight. The act...
And we've emailed everybody's email who we have for the opposition and notified those property owners of the meeting tonight, just so that they are aware that this is just a presentation to have for you folks, that you can have all the information in front of you. They do, they will be notified again that the public hearing will be on February 6th. We did have that as well. So I don't want to waste their time. I don't want to waste your time either.
Okay.
But if there are points that you think we should be touching on, again, the PUD really is intended to allow the commission the ability to dissect the plan. If they were to zone it, straight zoning to R2 or R1 SM, which the Planning and Zoning Commission has rejected, the city commission wouldn't see the plans before they come in. They would simply have to meet the zoning district. So that's why we pursued that PUD, and our city attorney has talked about that at the last meeting, and I don't know if he's getting prepared tonight, but I expect he would have something prepared before February 6th as to what we can and cannot enforce, so.
Okay, and you'll give us, if other emails come in or whatever, you'll give us that information before...
Absolutely. Yeah, we did receive one last week that we forwarded along. It's similar to the previous one that was in the packet, so.
Mayor, could I ask just one question?
Sure.
Under PUD, biggest concern I've heard from these people in that area is density. With the PUD, can we control the density of that development? Do we have that type of control? Is it more controlled project?
I believe you can, and I defer to our city attorney on my concurrence with that.
Yeah, you can control the density. I mean, the control has to be reasonably related to the underlying use, but yes, you can control density within a reasonable restriction.
Any other questions? If not, thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go with item number one, a 5:30 public protest hearing regarding street improvement District 2243. Jan?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the West Fargo City Commission. Tonight, we have a public hearing for Street Improvement District 2243. The street district has been published, the notice of tonight's hearing has been published in the newspaper, so it is valid to proceed with the public hearing. The city has received nineteen, nineteen total protest letters out of approximately 3,000 parcels. Of those nineteen, a couple were what I would deem questionable, whether they're true protests or not, but we decided with interpreting it more liberal that we had nineteen protests. There would be, under that guise, there would be insufficient protests to proceed, but you're still required to have the public hearing.
Okay. Is there any questions of John before I open the public hearing? Again, this is regarding Street Improvement District 2243. If not, I'll open the public hearing. Is there any public comment? Yes, sir.
Do I come up here?
Yes. We'll need your, sir, we'll need your name and address for the record.
My name is Ken Kaler. My address is 307 10 and 1/2 Avenue East. Just my comment is that having lived here 40 years and used that intersection many times, I don't see the need for this to go forward. I could see the, a traffic light at 10th Avenue and 9th Street. There's been many times I sat there and waited and waited to make a left turn if I was coming from the west, but as far as having any problems to speak of at that intersection where they're proposing a large cost change, I personally don't see a need for that. And particularly, I guess also, with the cost that goes along with it, but even with or without. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Is there any other public comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Barry Miller, and I live at 637 12 and 1/2 Avenue East. My complaint about this, I got a couple of things here. It's not so much that I don't know if the project's needed, it's the way it was communicated to us. I mean, we get the letter on January 9th, many of us get home at 5:30, the meeting's already going on. You know, you know it gets published in the paper, you know in December. Why didn't we not get a letter? I've been out of town for two and a half weeks taking care of an ailing parent. I missed the first meeting. I get home on the 9th, the meeting's already started. If they know they got it published in December, why not give us the letter in December? That is my complaint about this. I think you guys should delay it to allow people that didn't have the adequate notification through the mail to give them more time. Maybe somebody wants to protest about that. That's my first point. My second point was, I followed the protocol in that letter. I sent an email to the city administrator protesting, and if I could, I'd like to know, he said that there were two that they said were not deemed protests, I'd like to know what criteria they used to say they're not deemed protests.
John?
And actually, just so that everybody's clear, we thought that they may or may not be because they were protesting the boundaries, not necessarily the actual improvement, but we did count them as protests. And Tina can go basically through them, but they were counted as protests even though they were slightly questionable whether or not they would truly qualify in a court of law.
What about the, what about the letter, John, going out on that date? What are we doing wrong here as far as that goes, or are we?
What, what we did is, the city was required to have a public hearing because of the DOT process, and Dustin can explain that far better than I, but we had one meeting for that DOT process. That one, no letters went out, it was just published in the paper as was required by law. It was put out on our website, it was put out in, in other types of social media. It was requested to have a second meeting just because we did not send out individual letters, so not because we were required to, but because we thought it was a cordial thing to do. Letters went out, and a second meeting was held. Now, I can't describe why some peoples didn't come till late. I had quite a few that commented that, you know, my letter was late. I don't know why. Some didn't come until much later. Some people got theirs a little earlier, but at the end of the day, that information is available to the public at any time they want to come in and talk to us. We're glad to go through and explain everything to them and, and just go through the project. That is what we had done. We had Melissa, our communications specialist, send out additional information, post additional information, just in an effort to be, to filter out as much as we could, but we can't reach everybody, and though we can always learn from different things, the reason we don't send out letters every time is because there's a significant cost, and all that does is add to the special assessment cost. If you're sending out 3,000 letters and you send them out once or twice, there's all of that cost that gets put in there, and so therefore, we don't always do that. Did I answer your question?
Yes, you did. I'm just pondering ahead here, just trying to think how we can make sure that everybody does get the word and know about it. And I think you, I think if we put it on social media, we put it in the paper, you knew, you know, we had a second one because of that. I mean, that wasn't a, that's one we needed to have, so.
I guess my point being, they knew that they had to publish it in December, why not send the letter out in December? I honestly don't think that the cost, yes, 3,000 letters at 49 cents or maybe 25 cents to print them. When you're talking about a $6.9 million project, you're talking $10,000, $15,000? What percentage is that? Let the public know. All of a sudden, people are going to get a $1,000 bill, $2,000 bill, $5,000 an acre, whatever it may be. Let the public know. You're posting it in December in the paper, which is another cost, so why not get the letters out? That's my first point. My other point was, I followed the protocol in the letter, and I sent a letter to the administrator, and I sent one to each of the, each of the commissioners. I have a problem with one of the commissioners feeling it was necessary to forward my communication to them onto Moore Engineering, when there was something in there about Moore Engineering that I was hoping the commission would address, and then I get a letter from Moore Engineering saying, "Please contact me directly about this." I think that's totally inappropriate for commissioners to forward that on without contacting me and having a discussion. I was very, very disturbed by that, and I think that's totally wrong. I think our commission, our city's getting big enough where we should consider looking at getting our own engineering department. I've had problems with Moore Engineering sending letters 10 years ago. We never get it. I think it's time we look at getting a different engineering department and distance ourselves from Moore. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes, sir.
All right. Good evening. My name's Les Mo, I live over in 1721 Charleswood Estates Drive. I'm going to reiterate what that gentleman just said. I get this letter, and it's dated Thursday, December 30th, 2016. I received it on the 10th of January from the post office, same thing, day after. Why? Tell me why it takes 11 days, 12 days, from the time you put it out till the time I get it? Good question. Are we keeping it in the dark so people can't come to these meetings? I get this the next day after this meeting is done. I really question it. And another thing, I want to touch on a couple of things. Why is the city, entire city, not paying for this intersection cost instead of making a special assessment district? Everybody in the city uses that intersection, but we in that Charleswood area and this special assessment district that was drawn out from 94 up to 7th Avenue, I find it very interesting that only a certain percentage of the city is being assessed for this. I'm getting, and I'll go back a few months, maybe a year ago, Charleswood Estates Drive over there, we were talked to about paving special assessment in our district, in our area over there. Out of 88 houses in that Charleswood Estates Drive, 85 of them voted against paving that area. Well then, what did the city commission do? City commission came in and did a special assessment, widened the area out for repaving everything, and I was stuck with 1,800, almost $1,900. Now I'm being told I'm going to be stuck with $1,000, and that's not even starting to get into the rework of Cheyenne Street, okay? I'm going to probably be stuck with what? $1,000, $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 for that? And then somebody told me the other day when I was up at City Hall, there's also going to be that interchange out on I-94. Are we piecemealing this? Are we going to get stuck with this, or what? My question...
Not being charged for that, sir, that I-94...
Okay, I hope not. I mean...
And I don't know, Dustin, if he's going out as far as, there's a lot of people in here right now that are, you know, you're talking about, you're, I realize what you're saying, I understand it, but I just ask you to look at the whole picture.
I do, I do.
...to about $70 million that are going, some of these people are sitting in this room, I don't think you're going to be, you know, charged for that portion.
I agree. I mean, I'm...
So it's divided where you, you know, system is what it's been, and it's difficult to change.
See, I wouldn't be living here in West Fargo...
Right, right, and right now, we're talking about this assessment district. I'm sorry, but...
That's all right. I wouldn't be living in West Fargo if I didn't like the city. Just some of the things that are going on. Why is this letter coming out so late the day after? Why can't it come out? Just like the gentleman said, why can't it come out ahead of time? Let people know.
When were they actually sent? Does anybody know? When did they actually go to the post office?
The, and I'll speak on behalf, Melissa, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the letter was actually sent to the post office on December 30th, and due to the holiday, it wasn't sent to the post, it was sent to the printing company on December 30th. Due to the holidays, they didn't get working on it until the Tuesday after New Year's weekend. Took them two days to assemble the mailing, and the mailing went out on Thursday.
What day was that?
Thursday would have been the third, I imagine, third or fourth.
And from the post office right over here to Charleswood Estates Drive, it takes seven days?
Well, it is the U.S. Postal Service, so I'm just going to say to you, if that's when it was mailed, then that's when it was mailed, and we can't control the postal service, my friend.
I understand that, but I know the post office better than that, too, and the post office is not that bad.
And the other thing I'll comment on the letter is that the letter was intended to inform those within the assessment district that there was a protest hearing tonight. So we so happened to have scheduled a second public meeting about the project for the ninth, which was a week ago, but the main intent of that letter was to inform people of this public hearing for the assessment process.
What, Chris or Dustin, what's the deadline on this project? I know we've got a lot of federal funding that we cannot afford to lose on this project, so what's the deadline?
The deadline for the funding is 2017, this year, so we do have to start construction and...
So not to open a can of worms here, but would it be disappointing if we, well, we're having a public input meeting, I mean, if we, if we could have another, or do we need another, I mean, what are the people asking for, I guess? Another public input meeting, or are you just upset the way it was done? Can we correct that somehow?
That's up to the city council.
I realize that, but I'm asking you as a citizen and the other ones that are probably going to get up behind you, what would you like to do?
I would, you know, in talking with people, even people in City Hall told me that they were upset that they got the same letter that I did the day after. People that work for City Hall got it the day after, like I did, the day after that first meeting on the 9th, received it on the 10th, just like I did. You know, if one part of the city receives it the third or fourth or fifth, why isn't the rest of them if they're all sent out at the same time? We don't send them out in batches.
My, my question would be, though, and I hear what you're saying, I hear what you're saying, but you have an opportunity this evening to, to protest, and so we're kind of going back in time here when in fact you do have, and I get where you're angry, and I get that, and we'll try and improve that, improve that in the future, but for now, I mean, you do have that opportunity, and you are doing it this evening, so...
Yes, you can, you can mark me down as a protest on this, but I would like to see, you know, why isn't the public being kept more informed about this than they are?
And can I ask, how was the, the assessment district determined? Let's answer the gentleman's question about that.
Good question. North of the interstate, when we've done our arterial street improvements, we have been assessing a half a mile each way. So for example, Main Avenue, Main Avenue was assessed a half a mile to the north and a half a mile to the south, which is 7th Avenue is that boundary. So with 13th Avenue, as, as improvements are done on 13th Avenue, that'll be a half a mile to the north, but unfortunately, going a half mile to the south basically cuts Charleswood in half. There's really no other arterial roadway that the southern half of Charleswood would then help contribute and pay for. The philosophy there is that, over time, everyone helps pay for an arterial road, an east-west and a north-south, and so to, I believe, the majority of the comment letters that I saw were questioning, why did we stop it at 7th Avenue? And again, that's, that's because that's where the boundary of Main Avenue was ended.
Dustin, real quick, just because I, correct me on this, how this works, but it's not, it's not Moore Engineering that determines this, it's that citizen advisory board, right? The special assessment board?
Yes, the, well, the special assessment committee or commission is the, the governing body on allocating the assessments. So once, once this project is ready to be assessed, we will bring in the special assessment commission to make a recommendation on how to allocate those assessments. Establishing the assessment boundary itself is, it starts with the engineer and then is brought to the city commission for approval.
If I may, beyond on that question right there, what he just made, that statement, he said a half mile in each direction. Is that standard, or does it sometimes go up to a mile?
And that's where I was explaining that with, with the unique situation of Charleswood and then the interstate going along the south side of Charleswood. The reason why this is extended a mile south is to have all of Charleswood in it instead of bisecting Charleswood. If, if we were to have bisected it at purely a half a mile, that southern portion of Charleswood would theoretically never pay for an east-west arterial roadway. But yes, we, we start with the concept of a half a mile, but there are geographic boundaries where, you know, when we did Main Avenue, a half mile to the north, at some point, the railroad is less than a half a mile, so we ended that boundary at the railroad instead of truly going the 2,600 feet.
Well, the reason I'm asking that is because when they put in that 17th Avenue south from Cheyenne, there was an intersection light put there at 17th and Cheyenne, and then there was a light placed down at 9th and 17th, I was assessed for both of them, you know, because I was with, when, as I was told, one mile of those areas. So are we doing half mile or are we doing a mile?
We have other arterial roads that, for example, on the south side, when we did Veterans Boulevard, we went a mile. The reason for this one being a half mile to the north is, again, Main Avenue was started and done at, at a half mile each way.
Not beating a dead horse here, all I want to know is, why isn't the entire population of the city of West Fargo paying for these improvements? And all of those, all of those assessed areas or ideas that it's going to be a major renovation of these roads, everybody should be paying for, because more people use it than I do. And we've got all of these people coming in from the south, and in the mornings, if I go to a doctor's appointment or something out south, all the people I see coming in from the, from the very far south block those roads up continuously. I mean, they're blocked up from, you know, blocks, and literally, it's a, it's a waiting game out there. But yet, a certain group of people of area is going to pay for this? Why not everybody? We've got that special tax, we've got a half cent sales tax.
Yes, excuse me, Mayor and Commissioners, and, and I want to address that. It has been already discussed with the commissioners that, you know, when the citizens were kind enough to vote on that extra one cent sales tax, there's going to be one cent sales tax money put towards this project because we understand that, that's a very well-used road, it's used by people in and outside of the city limits, so it's a perfect corridor to put the city's sales tax towards. So we have, we'll have our federal funding, and then city's sales tax will go towards it to bring the special assessments down. We have to have a district, and we have guidelines that we go by, but in order to keep your special assessments down to something more reasonable, sales tax will be applied by the city commission that one, of that one cent that you were kind enough to vote for.
Okay. All right, well, those are my concerns, and you can call it, you can register me as a protest if you'd like, but I think there's a lot of people that I've talked to who are just probably very concerned about this idea of late notices and these assessments, but personal opinions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Steve Markort, 725 15th Avenue East. Just the same things as going in there, and I, we can beat a dead horse here, but I've talked to the people here in the city. Each and every one of these 3,000 people in the back of this map receive a water bill. If it's that important and we're worried about mailing things, why wouldn't we put this letter in with the water bill? And I've asked that question several different times, not only with this, but even for specials, when we get a special assessment. If you, last year in Charleswood, we got $1,800, whatever they did the street overlay, okay? I think it's at four and a half or four and three-quarter percent was the percentage on it. If I wait to pay that over the 20 or 25-year period, that $1,800 costs me about three grand, okay? So if people have that presented to them in that way, people might come up and say, you know, when I can make this $1,800 payment, or I can make this $1,000 payment rather than going to $1,500 or $1,600. Or if it just gets thrown onto my specials, and I don't see that right away or don't pay attention to it, that's, that's a big issue. And I, and I, the same thing, I was here last, last Monday night, and Dustin, he's been kind of thrown under the bus a little bit, getting beat up there, a little bit of things going on, but he got it last week as well. But the thing about this is, is that, and I asked this question, because in this letter right here, it talks about, it's in the legal section. Last week, there were probably half this amount of people here, and I asked the question, how many people get the Fargo Forum where it's in the legal section? And there was probably a handful of people that said they got the Fargo Forum. I said, and I do get the Fargo Forum, and I said, "How many of you read the legal section on Monday?" And no one answered that. Not one person said that they looked through the legal section on Mondays as that happened. And then also in this letter, it says it was in there twice. It was in there on the 5th and the 12th of December. So if we knew about this on the 5th and the 12th of December, and probably prior to that, because if this project is supposed to start here in April or May, I don't think this probably came up today. This has probably been in the works for a year or longer. True or false?
True.
True. So why wouldn't we get the communication about this when we're, when it's getting started? Okay? The same thing, you know, the letter, it's dated the 30th, the holidays are probably the worst time to send it out, and I think that's where, I think that's where's a lot of frustration in this, is that people almost think this is trying to get slid underneath the rug, because I received my letter on Saturday, the 7th, okay? Other people didn't get it, but of course, same thing, and it came in an envelope that really resembled junk mail that probably people will throw away, okay? And probably a lot of people did. I think that's a major issue, okay? I think the communication process has to change, and this has been an ongoing process. This isn't just a one-time thing. I think, like I said, each and every one of these 3,000 people in the back of here get a water bill. And even if they do it paperless, guess what? You could attach it to that, it goes out with their water bill. And the other thing is, I heard, it's true, I understand people, we have to pay for things, but we do have that sales tax. And this sales tax, if it's a 25-year deal, they're going to assess specials, at that one percent, there's a lot of money in 25 years.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's something that, you know, this is a major artillery route, okay? I don't, the other thing I want to make, I live in 15th Avenue. I can't come out to 9th Street and 15th Avenue at, at 8 o'clock in the morning or at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the afternoon, because you can't get onto it. You have to go around the other way to get there. It's probably impossible to put a light there because it's a T-intersection, you've got 16th, they don't match. I don't know how that's... I don't know how that's going to change. The other thing I don't understand is if you put double the traffic on a turning going south on Seventeenth Avenue, or Seventeenth, or Ninth Street, how you're putting double the cars in there is going to alleviate the problem when it already bottlenecks. Go out and sit on Seventeenth Avenue at 4 o'clock in the, or 4:30, 5 o'clock, 5:30 in the afternoon. You're not moving traffic. And I think that's a major concern.
Chris, you have an answer for that?
Well, the issue, the reason why we're looking at double left turns is actually so we can, can move twice the amount of left turners in a smaller amount of time. So we're able to give more green time for the north-south and east-west movement. So, so if we're able to push those cars through, we get more, more through time. So we actually add capacity of the intersection.
But how does that help going south? It's already bottlenecked, and you have twice as many cars coming.
Well, we're, we're working on building the intersection, fixing the intersection at, at Ninth and Thirteenth. That's the safety issue, that's the capacity issue we have in this project. We have, uh, a payment issues, we have stormwater issues. So, so it's just not a safety issue we're trying to fix. We're trying to fix the, the capacity. The pavement was, is over 40 years old. All of Thirteenth Avenue needs to get re, recon, reconstructed probably within the next 10 years. So that's a lot of the things that are going in here. So, so we're, we're leveraging this $2 million federal funds in here. Uh, likely have some, some sales tax coming in here. So it's just, just, it's never going to get cheaper now to build this project than, than in the future.
And Chris, I think too, just to remind us all, but that's the whole reason the federal government's putting money in, because this is a dangerous intersection. It's rated what in the state?
It's always in the top five.
Top five crash sites in the state, so obviously it's a concern.
And I'll just say that, the last week of the meeting they had, they said this intersection has had 55 accidents in the last three years. That's about one and a half accidents a month. There's no proof that there will be less than one and a half accidents a month after you have a double turn lane in there. Because bottom line is, you can't fix stupid drivers. Okay? And it doesn't matter what you say, if you still have to have, the people have to obey the stoplights, and that's where the problem's coming in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, certainly.
I'd just like to address, because one of the commissioners asked what the citizens would want. From my perspective, I think you should postpone this and give it another two weeks. It's not going to change anything, we, there are minor people that, it is small. But it's a lesson learned, delay the process because it, the information was just not given to the people. Not everybody reads every, has access to the internet, not everybody has access to the forum, and not everybody has access. We rely on a lot of things, and I do agree with that water bill. I pay mine online, but I still get a statement every month. You know, so from, from my point, based on what a commissioner asked, what I think you should do is delay this and have it again in two weeks. Thank you.
In fairness to our reporter from the West Fargo Pioneer, everybody gets the West Fargo Pioneer free, and all the legals are in there, right? But anyway, I, it's a...
Comes in the mail.
Comes in the mail, or you get it with the form.
Chris?
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Commissioners.
Yes, you do, you still get it in the mail.
You get it in the mail.
Yes, you do.
Yeah, you do.
You do, trust me, I get it.
Yes.
Comes in the mail.
Go ahead, Chris.
We may have some difficulties delaying this. Uh, there's, there's a, since it's involving federal money, it has to be bid through the state process, and they require completed set plans and specifications 10 weeks prior to the bid date. So we start moving this back, this slides, it's going to slide the whole timeframe back, and this project may not be starting until sometime in June, which will, with the short, with the compressed construction season we have and dealing with, with start and end times at school, it could be very difficult. Not saying it's impossible, but it would be very difficult to delay this.
Well, there's a chance we could lose the funding if we delay it.
Well, it, yes, it, the funding isn't contingent, if we delay it, it may, we may miss the, the construction season that we want. That we may be starting this project in mid to late June when we should be starting it in May.
Okay. Hey, thank you, Chris. Is there any other public comment? Yes, sir?
Ben G. from, I live at 1577 Third Street West. Um, with the federal funding, how does it, does the city have, do you have to pony up dough to get the federal funding?
10%.
10%? Have we looked at other, I'll, I can go through the whole letter thing and what everybody else said, but I'll just cut through it. Um, I'm kind of confused as far as where the project is at, and I was always told at the last meetings I've been at, that it's been a one-mile radius. And I understand there's different circumstances, but it seems like it's all concentrated on one area. I drive through that area not all the time, and I agree with what the, what the gentleman said, that the main congestion is going south on Ninth. There's so many people coming from Thirteenth Avenue wanting to cross, you know what I mean, and get to the south side of the interstate. Other than that, I really don't feel like there's a huge need for the entire project. You know, they looked at putting up like a timer, you know what I mean? I think there's, there's, there's some high speeds that go through there. I don't really think there's a ton of traffic all the time. Um, have they looked up, just putting up like a timer on the left-hand side? I see those at some of the other intersections that one cost all the taxpayers a bunch of money. Um, have we looked at something of lesser cost? Just seems like we were, we were, I don't want to talk about another project, but we were talking about a Cheyenne project, the interstate thing, and they were going to tax, they were going to hit us with a bunch of stuff north of the interstate that should have been Phase 5, but they were trying to push it through. That got declined. Now this is coming. You know, I, there's, there's people that are like northeast of that section too. I just don't feel there's a need at all for the project. I think there's a much cheaper alternative, and it's like we just want to rip everything up. I know that Firestone just went in there on the corner. It's like, why isn't this getting thought about? You know, it just seems like we just want to pile big dollars, big projects. Why not look at some other alternatives?
Um, I have a short response here, but I'm, I'm going to go back a few years, back to 2011, 2012, when, uh, the corridor study was done on Ninth Street, all the way from the north side was County Road 20 all the way down to 52nd Avenue. And it was through that corridor study where a lot of the, the traffic congestion were brought up, the safety concerns, especially at this particular intersection, um, along with all the other things that go into a, a study we get at Myles Road. Um, the result of that study, and it concluded in 2012, um, really flagged this intersection as being not only congested and having a difficult time passing through, uh, through traffic, its safety side of it was legitimate concern, um, as recognized by MetroCOC and UDOT. That was the entire basis of being eligible for funding on this, for this project. Um, so it was in 2012 that the application for funding was submitted, um, through MetroCOC to this day on behalf of the city. And it, it takes time, but we were able to get, uh, programmed to give this, this funding in 2017. So that's really where a lot of, a lot of the improvements that were identified, and, and yes, we, that same study also identified the need, um, to further expand Ninth south of Thirteenth, uh, to continue to expand Ninth as you go north. Um, but the safety component drove the funding, and the funding was available this year, which is driving the construction schedule. The pavement up there is over 40 years old. It's, it's been overlaid with asphalt, um, a couple times, I believe. But again, there's aging infrastructure, it's old pavement, so now is the appropriate time to tackle what we can and make good use of, of the safety dollars that we were awarded. I'm not sure if that's answering your question. And, and back to the, the, the assessment district, again, there's roads like Main Avenue. It went a half mile each way. Significant portions of Main Avenue, of course, were funded through, through the state, federal dollars. The city has applied sales tax with, with that project. Um, back to this particular intersection, the, the, all the same mechanisms are in place. We're going to get federal dollars to help fund it. We're going to likely use sales tax dollars to help fund it. But there is still a portion that will have to be funded through a special assessment. And the best thing we can do is follow what has been done, ask in that consistency, it's a mile north, and like I explained, you can't just stop at a half mile south, or there's a significant portion down there that will have never paid for an arterial road.
So can they look at reassessing that particular area versus, I mean, who comes up with, why is it that section? Why is it that section versus, you know what I mean? It seems like there's a lot of other areas that...
Well, and, and so to the east, the city, the city boundary line is roughly at Seventeenth Street or Sixteenth Street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but going to the east, it really only extends a half mile. You get to City of Fargo. Um, going to the north, again, we're going a half mile because of what was done with Main Avenue, and that leaves a southwest quadrant then predominantly being Charleswood. And we're not placing Charleswood in half and asking for the, the people that are north of Seventeenth Avenue to pay for, for the arterial roads and these improvements, people to...
I, I just, I think they should relook at it. I think they should look at other alternatives, cheaper, cheaper alternatives than what there is. That's...
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? If not, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the city commission. Do, uh, any comments, questions of any of our staff?
I just want to maybe make one comment real quick, and I'll shut up. All those assessments we talk about, people, you under, you have to realize that when you talk about your area, and it's, it's just not you folks. Every time we do this, we have known over the years, I see Sharon sitting there, every time over the years we see this, that when we do assessments like this, it would be like, if we could go back to our founders 50 years ago, we would say, great, let's just do every project we do, let's assess the whole city and be it, and that's the way it is. Unfortunately, that's not the way it started. So now we have the south side, which is very progressive, very new, and we have, we'll just call where we're sitting today, the north side. It's, would totally be not fair to assess this north side for all the new stuff south moving forward, because they paid for all this stuff. So we have to have that break, we have to do that analysis of what areas and what area. It's unfortunate, but that's kind of the way it's been, and, and it's hard to change at this point. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dustin.
Very right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments or questions? Not, do I hear a motion? We are approving or voting against the assessment district, right? The, the special assessments. Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Moved in second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Uh, next item, public hearing to consider support for a community development block grant for the YWCA project. Larry?
Yes, Your Honor, members of the commission. Um, I'll just introduce this and then, um, provide, uh, opportunity for, uh, the, uh, other applicants to, um, provide more information to you. The community has, has seen a need for, um, additional permanent supportive housing in the community. Um, as a result of that, Beyond Shelter, a nonprofit, uh, organization on behalf of the city, uh, is putting together an application for community development block grant funding, uh, which would be accessed via Lake Agassy Regional Council. Uh, the intent is to construct 30 permanent, uh, units of housing that would be on the site of Lutheran Church of the Cross, uh, their property. And, uh, the Church of the Cross, Beyond Shelter, um, and, uh, the YWCA have all been involved in, uh, working together and developing, uh, this project. Uh, I guess with that, um, I'd like to, um, provide for, uh, the pastor of the church or Dan Madler from, uh, Beyond Shelter, uh, to provide more information on the project and answer any questions.
Oh, wait until we get the, the public hearing for that. Any questions, Larry, before I open the public hearing? If not, we'll open the public hearing, is there any public comment?
Hello, Mayor Maden, members of the commission. My name's Erin Prochnow. I live at 669 Somerset Lane, but I also have the great privilege of being the CEO of the YWCA Cass Clay here in Fargo, where we've been providing shelter and housing to women for over 110 years in the Cass Clay communities. About this time last year, Pastor Joel Berenko from Lutheran Church of the Cross approached me and other nonprofit entities indicating he had a parcel of property, uh, attached to his land, and what might we at the YWCA utilize such land for? And I said, well, in fact, uh, we recently wrote our strategic plan, and it mimics much of what the federal, state, and local plans indicate, that there is a need for more affordable supportive housing. Recent studies have indicated that there's going to be another 15,000 folks moving into our communities in the next five years, half of them qualifying for services like the YWCA provides. In addition to that, we know that women need a path towards independence when they leave emergency shelter as a result of domestic violence and homelessness. We've been providing such a service in the community for 40 years. For the past 25 years, we've been operating permanent and transitional supportive housing programs and have done so very successfully. 92% of the time, women exit our programs successfully, independent, and on their own. So our team at the YWCA has worked with Lutheran Church of the Cross, Pastor Berenko and his team, to discuss what such a project might look like in West Fargo, because they have the land available, and we have the expertise to administer such a program. What we're proposing is a 30-unit apartment complex, attached to it with a communal space, a recreational space, and staffed by our team, two people. In addition to that, there'd be a partnership with the church and other stakeholders in the community. We have existing partnerships with Sanford Health to have a nurse on-site at our shelter location about 25 hours a week. We would expand that, part of our strategy is to expand that nurse component to this site. In addition to existing partnerships with the school district in Fargo, I've met with the superintendent of the West Fargo Schools, who indicates there's plenty of room for the children that would reside in this permanent supportive housing structure. Uh, and in fact, if all goes as planned, uh, our project would come online about the same time the new school in that area would come online, and he said there'd be plenty of room for the approximate 45 children that would call some of these apartments home with their 30 children. At any given time, we're projecting about 75 women and their children residing, uh, in the structure. I'll maybe turn it over to Pastor Berenko or answer any questions you might have.
How long do the, the, they stay there on average?
The average currently in our programs is about two years, but because it's a permanent supportive housing pro, program, uh, they could stay as long as they'd like. Uh, part of the project also includes, uh, housing vouchers from the Cass County Housing Authority. It's another component of the project.
Yeah, good. Any questions?
I'm just curious, I know where this is going, have you talked to the neighbors? I know you had any meeting out there, and how do they feel about all this in that location, I mean?
Indeed, we have. We've, uh, held a public meeting at the church in December, uh, where Pastor Berenko reached out to the immediate neighbors in the neighborhood. Um, it seemed abundantly clear that they weren't opposed to our type of project. They seemed, um, opposed to pretty much anything going in their backyard at that point, because they'd lived there, uh, over the course of 20, 30 years in some instances, and, and didn't want to see a whole lot in their backyard. Uh, our group of folks have worked quite diligently, uh, to try and make the structure itself blend in with the already existing, um, community. Where it could be a three-story building, we're proposing two, and in some instances on the ends, just being one story. Um, in addition to that, uh, placing it further towards the Fargo Park property, um, further towards the east on the property, and leaving a large space, uh, open on the west side to include a, a playground, and leaving the existing volleyball courts and some other structures that are there.
It's some buffering.
That, that's our goal, along with the existing trees that are there. The other components that they've brought up is, could we add more trees, looking at fences, those kinds of things, and providing additional shade? And we're actually targeted to come back together with our architects, Schultz and Associates, again in the next two weeks to take their concerns and, and put pencil to paper again. It was just the holidays and didn't have a time to, to go back to it after, I think it was the 7th of December that we met.
Would that go like through PUD then, and I, I mean, planning zoning at all? PUD process, I mean, or is that just...
Currently, um, currently the property is already zoned R3, multiple family, which could accommodate much higher density and, and higher, uh, structures. much higher density and, and higher structures, so no.
Okay, thanks, that's good. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pastor?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Pastor Joel Baranco, Lutheran Church of the Cross. This time last year, like Erin from the YWCA indicated, our congregation began to wonder what could we put land that we now own, that we acquired from Holy Cross Catholic Church? What could we, what could we do with this that would serve the needs of the community? Myself and other leaders of the congregation feel that it's the role of a faith community to engage the needs and the challenges of the wider community in which we exist. And so that's when we began to look out, to look out and find, who are those partners of those agencies, those social service groups who are already doing exemplary work in our community? So we reached out to the YWCA. We had maybe wondered if they were interested in building more shelters in town, because we continue to hear that the shelters fall up regularly, year-round. And that's when we learned about permanent supportive housing, and the leaders of our church were very interested in this as a long-term solution, not only to address a current need in the life of a victim of domestic violence and, and her children, but a long-term solution to turn around in the lives of these kids, what would be maybe generational issues. And so we're really pleased and excited to be working as a church, together with the YWCA, to address the lives of, and the needs and challenges that children and women are facing in our community. We did embark upon a, a very, what I'd call aggressive and early communications plan you heard a little bit about. We widened the circle of individuals who were aware of what we were thinking and planning very early. And then we reached out. I, I myself went door-to-door to immediate neighbors of the church property to the south. Then we mailed everyone across the street, farther beyond that, invited them to share this invitation with anyone they wanted to come to a neighborhood meeting and, and hear about what we were thinking, what's being proposed, to get their thoughts and their reactions. And again, we're really pleased with, with their reactions as well. We haven't met any resistance that says we shouldn't do this, because we don't think there's a need, or we think this is a bad idea. As Erin said, we've heard a few say, we've really enjoyed for 15 or 20 years having this nice, beautiful, open, green space there. And I don't blame them. I've got a lot of backyard neighbors where I live. But we, at the congregation, feel it's time to put, put that land to use. Thank you.
Well, I, I, I have to say that I, I would like to, me personally, thank the church for taking this project on. It's, I, I don't think there's any doubt there's a need, and I think it's a great plan. And I just want to thank you and pass on to the congregation that I am very happy that you're working on this.
Thank you for saying that. I will.
Is there any other public comment? Sir?
Mayor Mattern and city commission members, for the record, my name is Dan Mader. My address is 3320 West Track Drive, Fargo, and I am the CEO for Beyond Shelter Incorporated, a mission-driven North Dakota nonprofit affordable housing developer based in Fargo. To date, Beyond Shelter, in partnership with others, have closed on the financing of 952 affordable residential homes, of which 45 currently serve the community of West Fargo. Beyond Shelter develops quality affordable housing that we, and we refer to our housing as homes versus units, as that is what they are. And in partnership with the YWCA, Erin Prochnow, the Lutheran Church of the Cross, and Pastor Joel, I'm here to respectfully request your consideration and support for the $250,000 community development block grant application for the proposed YWCA permanent supportive housing project. The grant funds would be used to help acquire the land for the project via long-term lease, and would be the first committed funds that could then be used to help leverage and support future funding applications. I would anticipate all funding applications to be submitted by September 30th of this year, and if successful, all funding for the project could be secured by December 2017. If funding is in fact secured by December 2017, I would anticipate finance closing and construction to begin in the spring, early summer of 2018, with construction completion in the spring, early summer of 2019. With that, I would like to thank you for your time and your consideration, and I stand for any questions that you may have.
Question?
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? One more time, is there any other public comment? If not, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the city commission. Any comments, questions? Of Larry?
I'd like to point out in your packet that there was a community needs assessment that the community was to undertake for this application, and primarily looking at all the public infrastructure needs of the community and, and so on. The planning department met with public works and engineering and so on in, in going through that, and, and to the best of our abilities, we took a look at what needs were there and identified that, that there was nothing in, in this particular project that would, that would set off track any of those public needs that, that need to be taken care of over the next number of years for the city. I'd be open for any questions that you might have, and...
Any questions, Larry?
I believe there is a resolution as well in here to be considered in the packet. So the approval here would be a approval of the, of the, the submittal of the application, resolution of sponsorship.
For the development block grant.
Yes.
Any questions, Larry? If not, do I hear a motion?
Make that motion to approve.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item, public hearing and hold first reading for Rivers Bend at the Preserve, fourth edition subdivision and rezoning from ag to R1A. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This application was received in order to accommodate the plating of vacant ag land for the purposes of developing single-family residential lots. The plat is a continuation of the previously planted and area-planned Rivers Bend development at the Preserve. The previously reviewed area plans have not changed, other than some minor lot shifting. Development has significant, significant connectivity for pedestrians and parks, as well as adequate road right-of-way to handle the increased density. Developer's been working with the park district for a number of months to develop a natural park amenity along the Cheyenne River. This will serve as a required 10% land dedication, actually be quite a bit higher than that. The park district will be accepting what is to be a low-impact natural chair, trail, and preserve along the river. It will be unique to this area. The berm that will be constructed at the back of the residential lots adjacent to that would act as a buffer and boundary to the amenity, and it will be constructed prior to those lots being sold off and developed. Just a couple little items that are being worked on. I don't expect the second reading or final approval to come forward at the immediate next meeting. It might be a couple months. But the Planning and Zoning Commission at their December 12th meeting in 2016 held a public hearing and reviewed the application, and hereby is recommending approval of the application, with the conditions noted in the staff report. I'm available for any questions, as is the developer.
Any questions, Tim, or the developer, before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? One more time, is there any public comment? If not, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the city commission. Any questions, Tim, or any comments? If not, do I hear a motion?
Make motion to put it on first reading. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item four, 2016 FM metro bicycle and pedestrian plan. Dan?
All right, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the commission. I was asked to keep this pretty brief, so I won't take too much of your time. Shooting for under five minutes for this one here, so. Anyway, I think a lot of the information you got there was in your packet, so a lot of information you'll have. So again, Dan Farnsworth here with the Fargo-Moorhead Metro Council of Government, MetroCog, and I just want to go over the 2016 bicycle and pedestrian plan that we have just completed, and we are seeking a resolution of support. So... Okay, so just a quick background, every five years, we, we update, we create a new long-range transportation plan, and that's part of our federal requirements as, as our agency. And as part of that, we also produce a new bicycle and pedestrian plan every five years. And this plan encompasses our planning boundaries, which includes the Fargo-Moorhead metropolitan area, and includes some of the outlying communities as well. The last plan was completed in 2011. It was a pretty successful plan. There were about 70 or so short-range projects that were proposed in the plan, and of those short-range projects, 60% of them got complete, so we're really proud of that. Some examples here in West Fargo would be, when Main Avenue just got reconstructed, they're, you know, proposing to have a shared-use path along that, which was done. And same with 12th Avenue, shared-use pass, path along there, too. So those are two examples there, so congrats on, on that. The plan was developed in cooperation with the public and then also with a study review committee. We have members from all the jurisdictions and other, other agencies in, in our area. So we had Tim Solberg as our representative from the city of West Fargo on the plan committee. Uh, just some quick facts, I won't take long on this. The Fargo-Moorhead area has 229 miles of shared-use path, so this would be paths, say, like through Rendezvous Park in West Fargo, in that vicinity, and then a lot of those paths are along roadways or tieral roadways. So West Fargo has 52 miles of, of those paths. And then, I won't go over the bike share too much here, but it's, I will say it's a very successful bike share program that's currently in Fargo, but hoping to expand someday. And, and then in 2014, the Fargo-Moorhead, West Fargo area was awarded the Bronze Bicycle Friendly Community Award, and that will be in effect until 2018, at which time we hope to reapply. So that's something West Fargo can definitely use that logo and, and post it on your, on your webpage, or whatever you'd like to do there. There were four public open houses as part of this plan. They were, they occurred in April of 2016. Two of them were on campus, on MSUM and NDSU campuses, and then the other ones were open houses, one at the Family Wellness Center, and then one downtown Far with the Library. But a lot of the comments we got were actually online, so we had great success with online surveys, and so we had 318 surveys completed online. So that seemed to be a great way to reach out to the public, which we found was successful. And of those surveys, there were comments, opportunities there, and I won't go over all these here, but the number one comment that people had was they'd like to see more education and driver awareness. People were concerned with distracted driving, finding that was kind of a safety concern, like if you're a pedestrian, seeing distracted drivers, and then some of the education, you know, with yielding and crosswalks and school zones. Another comment that was second on the priority list was more connectivity. Sometimes you get these trails that go through the neighborhoods and sometimes ends, they wanted that. And also more bicycle education for the cyclists themselves, that they don't always know the rules of the road. And I'll just, I won't go over the rest here, but you can see those in the plan.
Dan, isn't the idea that sooner or later, we'd like to connect all of South, or, or West Fargo all the way up to North Moorhead? Is that the idea eventually?
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of missing, there's a lot of gaps.
Just so far, but we're getting there.
Yeah, a lot of, yeah, a lot of missing pieces, but we're getting there. We are getting there. 12th Avenue is a great example of that shared-use path, bring people to the industrial areas. So then, at the end of the plan, we have a total of 20 recommendations, and those recommendations fall under these five categories, so you're welcome to take a look at that in the plan. And we did prioritize them based on the public comments, and then just based on the study review committee. And so the number one priority was bicycle and motorist education. That's something that we've always needed more of, and I think everybody can agree that more people, just more cyclists, would like to know the rules of the road and drivers in both, both ways. Safety, safety is always a, a hot item, and there's always concerns with that and how we can improve safety. And then number priority three, we'll go over this here in a second, just the network itself, like filling in those gaps. And then maintenance of the, of the facilities is something that the public did, did want to see more of. And then, how do we encourage maybe more usage of, you know, pedestrians and bicycle use, things like, how can we design our neighborhoods in a way that would be more inviting maybe to pedestrians and for school, kids to walk to school, things like that. So real quickly here, this is that, the map, and it's hard to see everything here, I won't go over it all, but what you see in red would be the short-term projects, and those are, those numbers correspond to what the project would be, and this is what's being proposed. And then, here in green, would be the, the green projects, the more long-term projects, which I would say to be about five to 20 years out, you know? And all these are just proposals, these are recommendations, and the city can incorporate them as they choose, but these are the recommendations. So with that said, I'll just open it to any questions.
Any questions, Dan?
Go, Dan.
Thank you. And we do have a resolution of support. We are seeking that from all the different jurisdictions.
Do I hear that motion? Moved. Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next, report from the city administrator.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'll keep this really short. We're at a little bit quieter time of the year as far as events go for the community. So we're just working on different policies, whether they're communication legislative policies, filling positions that were in the budget. And another good note, Erin has talked to the state auditor's office, and we'll be doing the audit early this year, so he's working hard on getting everything put together, and then we'll get more information out to you on that. Other than that, do you have questions of me?
Speaking of legislation, there's Larry's, Larry, are you putting together something about Renaissance Zone? Or Matt? Matt, you are?
Matt is working on that.
Yeah, there's a legislative hearing on Wednesday that would do away with the Renaissance Zone. And in Moni.
And I have gotten the agreement done, Levi, with, can't remember the name of the firm. He's been in contact with me, with me being out part of last week. We are going to get together this week, set up a schedule, and then if, get, I'll be filtering information out to you guys on what's going on and what he's seeing out there, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, everyone.